Yeah, I think he went to grab.
You got your notes?
Yeah.
Right now?
Okay.
Let the record show that no action was taken in closed session. And pursuant to our discussion in closed session, I will need a motion to increase the bargaining units from fifteen to seventeen, including the front office staff and office manager at the sheriff's department.
I'll make a motion.
Wagner?
I'll second.
Carter, second. Any more discussion on that? Hearing on all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Posed and carried. I would also need a motion to sign the public unit bargaining unit proposal tomorrow. I have a motion by class, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Wagner, any discussion on that? Hearing on all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Motion carried unanimous, and tomorrow I'll stop in and sign that. And that should take care of everything. Do you think of anything else?
Nope.
Want to?
Could somebody ask Will, I don't know if he can hear me, what's the best way for me to get him this corrected stipulation of bargaining unit?
Email it to me.
Uh, can you give me your email?
W stripper.
Oh, maybe I already have it.
Well, if you can't, email it to the auditor and he can pick it up at the auditor's office.
Okay, sounds good. I think, Will, I think you did give me your email, uh, Will, so...
Well, if not, we'll get it to you.
Okay, sounds good.
Melissa, make sure you get his email address to Renee. Thank you, Renee, are we done?
I think we're done, so I'll get, I'll get this and then, Will, you can just take it from there, um, and then file this new one with Perg and we should be all good to go.
Okay. Thanks, Renee.
Sorry.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Yep. You guys got anything else?
A lot of questions, but I guess that'll be another day.
Well, we don't have any answers, Will.
I know, that's why I said it'd be another day.
Now, if we jump around, are you catching up? Yep.
Okay.
We have next on our agenda, decision to approve resolution and sign waiver with Floyd, Emmett Butler, Bremer, alters convey in Iowa Utilities Board Pipeline Permit Proceedings. Who has information, anybody?
Hollers and Cooney.
I was looking through the stuff in the packet and it looks like this is for the Navigator Pipeline.
Right. But, let me get caught up here.
Hope you don't have to use them. You have fifty dollars an hour, four hundred and seventy dollars an hour, two hundred and twenty dollars an hour, two hundred and fifty-five dollars an hour. Yeah, I was hoping that too. They add it real fast.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, Tammy was a contact, she's not here, so Melissa, what do you know?
Nothing.
So this is our contract with them? Correct.
Well, I guess one, one of the things I was gonna say is, I don't, I don't know if it's a great idea to do this because everything that we'd probably be potentially fighting on with Navigator is already gonna be tried with Summit before that, so I think we'd be better off to let it go and see what happens with Summit, because they're gonna be the same arguments on both sides and Navigator's obviously later in the timeline.
Is that a consensus of the board? It goes through your territory, Stecker.
Yeah, I know, and I just, I don't think it's worth the price tag that they got listed out there as Jack rattled off, there's pretty high dollar figures and I don't, I don't think it's a good use of funds for that, so...
I tend to agree with you because really the decision's going to be up to the state and whether they let eminent domain do anything or not, and what we do with this one's gonna have little effect on the outcome.
Yeah, I mean, all the, all the potential battles will be already fought by the time that comes up, so I think we'll have our answers before we get to this point.
Problem is, is if we say no to this today, are we gonna be able to rejoin this at a later date if it's needed? That's my only thought is...
Probably not.
Probably not.
Is there a deadline on it?
I did not see a deadline on it, but at the same token, um, I'd say from all the conversations we've had, Navigator's six months plus behind Summit, so depending on the proposed or potential changes at the state level and all the court battles that'll happen with Summit's project before that, I think everything will be ironed out with the topic in general before this comes up.
The whole thing's gonna boil down to the state, if they, if they allow eminent domain, it's, it's over. If they don't allow eminent domain, then they're, then they're done. But I, I don't think it makes, it's gonna matter a lot what the counties do until it's gonna depend on whether or not the state and the governor signs eminent domain. That's really what the, what, that's what everybody's waiting on now.
I don't wanna go through two court battles with attorneys for the same...
Potentially a thousand dollars an hour.
Yeah, for the same really thing, I, I...
Exactly, and I, I think it'll all be fought by then anyway, so you'll have precedent from the first one, no matter whether we like it or not, we'll already have the answer.
Yeah, I, I think our taxpayers in our county would have a fit. We'd spend too much money on attorneys on both of them.
If it's comparable involved in, it will be pro-rated back if you sign up at a later date, so we wouldn't be out anything by waiting for this, right, the same situation.
Yeah. So, actually, we should...
What you did, it's like at the beginning.
And according to John Torbit, it sounds like they'll become, they'll be making a decision on eminent domain within the next, the next month or two.
Well, yeah, I get letters.
The legislators will be out for spring.
Yeah. They're, they're starting, they're ready to, to text me and saying they oppose giving eminent domain, so they're thinking about it strongly.
Right.
Yeah, and this, and this has nothing to do with Summit's project at all, so...
So I would need a motion of some sort on what you wanna do with this.
I would make a motion to not sign the joint agreement.
I have a motion by Mr. Stecker not to sign the agreement.
I'll, I'll second.
Second by Wagner. Discussion, yeah, go ahead.
If you tabled that, would that give you the opportunity to join later or VP or it doesn't matter, just a question.
There's a thought. How long can you postpone it? Thinking you're with other counties, right?
I know, but I don't.
There's no expiration date on the, on the contract.
I still, I don't really see a benefit in tabling it because at the end of the day, the projects are still that far apart, so like I said, I think we're gonna have answers a long time before Summit's ever gets to that point, or Navigator's gets to that point because Summit will already be decided.
Yeah.
And...
Well, it's, it's, the, I think the whole thing hinges right now in the state's decision on eminent domain. If they pass eminent domain, I don't, I don't hope they have a chance to stop it.
They, they do have a sentence in there that says, "If you disagree or otherwise believe anything herein is incorrect or mistaken in any way, please let us know as soon as possible. We will only be able to represent the counties in the matter of all counties, all in the agreement regarding this limited representation." So they're not gonna represent us if you don't sign it, which is, which is what we're saying, you know, so...
But the thing is, if those other counties are represented, they're gonna be spending, they'll be spending their money on it, and it doesn't make a difference whether we're in it or not, because they're gonna, they'll spend.
Can you guys hear me?
We got the wrong job, you know, I think...
Are you there?
...because it's written fifty dollars and four hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I'm here now.
Mr. Stecker, you never had any conversation with this law firm on the Navigator?
No, I did not.
And we've never had any in the boardroom in my recollection, correct?
No, so I, I don't think this applies to anything that we've talked about, because yeah, I, I did not request this, I'm assuming they sent it just because of the one we have with Summit, but I, I have not requested this from them for Navigator or anything, nope.
That concludes any of my questions, anybody else have any discussion on this?
No.
Do a roll call vote.
Class?
Yes.
Nat?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Stecker?
This is for my motion, right, Melissa?
Correct.
Okay, so yes.
Jarks?
Yes, and, and again, the motion was not to sign.
Right.
Yeah, I just thought I'd check with that since I got, we had technical difficulties there.
No, thank you. Give Melissa a chance to get caught up here. You're gonna take this job permanent?
No.
That came out fast.
What are you doing? Did we get a name? Oh, Andy?
Is taking, Pat resigned, so...
Okay, Andy's resigned?
Yes.
Okay, do, uh...
Yeah, Roger, on, on that, I had gotten a call from Rod Benkin this morning, and I see that Andy Maron's listed in there, so I'm good with that, but for daughter's office, um, Rod's willing to, if the next one resigns or whatever, he said he was interested and willing to.
Okay, I'll give that note tomorrow.
Perfect, thanks, Melissa.
I will need a motion to approve Andy Maron as trustee for Ramsey Township on the tenth day of January twenty twenty-three to fill the vacancy.
I'd make that motion, Roger.
A motion by Mr. Stecker?
I'll second.
Who's that?
Myself, yep, I'll second.
Nat?
Nat.
I gotta get used to calling you Nat. I have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Posed, motion carried unanimous.
Will, I just, I gotta go bathroom.
Yes, we're gonna take a...
Full eight and...
Let's just take a, let's just take a fifteen minute break.
For me, the biggest thing was you walk out the door. And so I set the recording right. Okay, you're welcome. I am, I might have to go back and listen to the bells to make sure I got everything.
Kyle, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm still here.
I had to kick it over again because it reconnected me to the public again.
It, it, it lagged for a couple seconds, but it came back once I got internet.
But, yeah.
Yeah.
So, not much left now.
I'll just, I'll just leave it here and then when you guys come back, I'll, I'll be back here too.
Sounds good. I gotta go complain to the IT department here.
If you forget KC Public, then it'll just connect to KCCH.
randomly restarted now too, so, yeah.
So how long have we been?
It probably was forced updates that Derek pushed out, I would imagine.
Both of ours.
We're here to complain to the IT of ours.
Yeah. Well, we're, we're backed up. Yeah, we're on break, we're backed up now, but...
Mine could...
I pushed this land sweeper agent to, um, man, monitor the inventory and as soon as I pushed it...
Derek broke it.
It enables the unit, UAC disables that, I totally...
Cut off our team's meetings, so...
As soon as I, as soon as I pushed it, I'm like, does that reboot that? And then I went in, I'm like, oh shit, and it was too late, I couldn't, I can't stop it once it goes.
I had no warning, I had no warning, we were sitting there talking, all of a sudden, next thing I know, I looked down, Kyle's gone, sorry Kyle.
Yeah, thanks Derek.
Do the work while I didn't interrupt you and, yeah. And then you guys were talking, I'm like, oh shit, Derek, yeah, anyway. You heard a conversation going, why is there stuff rebooting? I didn't hear that, but... Oh, you didn't? No, I was expecting it though, so... Sorry Kyle.
Mine did not reboot though.
Because you already have the land sweeper agent on yours.
Oh, okay.
Inventory, so...
Can I forget the public one because when it cut back in, it rejoined the public automatically?
I have, um, new group policy objects for Windows eleven, the Windows ten GPOs for WPA two work fine, but for Windows eleven, they're not working fine, so, um, as soon as I get the GPOs done, absolutely will do that, um, but yeah, until I get that done, it doesn't mean, I can move it over, but you'll have to manually do it, which, you know...
Derek, can't he just forget KC Public, so it doesn't connect there at all?
Oh, he's not in that group, I can move him over to a different group, but the Windows eleven GPOs are what I really need to work on.
Group policy objects.
Yeah.
Yeah, but aren't you connected to KCCH now again, Josh?
I had to, I had to switch it over, I mean, it's a quick switch, it's, it's...
That hasn't been reliable, KCCH connects on Windows eleven, like, if yours is actually working?
Yeah, it's working.
It is working?
Yeah.
Because I have a bunch that aren't working.
No, it's working, it's just that when I started up, it starts up in the public and then I have to kick it over to KC.
I'll switch yours to the other group then, so it, it doesn't do that, but for his, we want it to go.
Well, he, he probably has issues too with getting into the...
Derek, the only, the only thing it affected was when he switched it over, it had like maybe a five second lag, just because it didn't have internet for a few seconds, but it came right back for the meeting, so...
But I, I, yeah, I did have to switch it over though, because I can't get to the packet otherwise...
I normally had to...
You just have to turn your VPN on.
I'll just make my speed, you know, not getting it, yes, correct. Router a problem, but...
See, or, or you have that turned off and you can't use the VPN from the public to get into our network.
Yeah, yeah. We're a little forward, they're gonna go, they're trying to, what, hire you.
Yeah, also I had to do is...
Trying to hire it.
I'm sorry, it's been working fine on KC.
Just make sure you do a GPO update slash force before you go.
Before I leave.
You guys gotta learn how to do it, you know, that is...
Yeah.
All right, so we just hired a new guy down in La Verda.
I'll have to have admin privileges for that.
Yeah, 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 maybe, well, just like you guys, it's a learning curve, a big learning curve, you know, so...
Remind me, what was your name again?
Jay Maylin, I live in German section one, I'm actually in Rogers district, it's Germans in Rogers, but, uh...
Jay, what kind of trouble are you causing today?
You weren't on when I was on, at eight o'clock?
No, I didn't catch any of that.
I got on the road foreman, the road foremen were here, so I chewed their ass for everybody in the neighborhood.
What about?
Get the snow off the road, when we only get plowed once a week, it's pretty bad.
He was talking about on Christmas when they only plowed it the one time and...
They plowed it the Thursday before Christmas and I left the Tuesday after Christmas and they hadn't plowed since the Thursday before Christmas. And we just ate our Christmas till five o'clock on Christmas Day because Stephen and I were both out plowing and blowing roads. We decided that was better for us to keep the, everybody else happy than, than worry about ours, because it was just our immediate family, you know what I mean, him and our two kids. So that's, that's the way it is, but, and we under, we understand we got a rookie, but we need to get positions filled, we knew Gates was gonna retire and, uh, I figured, you know, Miller knew he should have been on it. So that's all, but I know you got calls, I know Roger got calls, so...
Yeah, I definitely got a few.
Because they told me that, everybody I've talked to told me that, so... So that's where it's at, no. Not trying to, you know, blame anybody, but it's just the idea that keep the little bit of pressure on them, so they, they know. Like I said, I don't know if the road foremans are supposed to be filling in, I should have asked that question, but that's what I was told. So, where are you hiding today?
I'm at home sick.
Well, good thing you're at home.
Where I was last week.
Yeah, I traded with Carter this week, I guess.
Gonna be going, what, a couple, three weeks, it sounds like now, on vacation.
I'm not gonna be gone a couple, three weeks, I already did that.
Well, do we have to start screwing a box together or what? You feel that bad?
What's that?
Start screwing a box together, do you feel that bad?
No, I'm, I, I think I'm on the downhill slide of it, but still woke up early this morning coughing a bunch and, I don't know.
It's a two week, three week thing to get rid of.
I hope not, I got a lot of stuff to do, I don't need to be out three weeks.
So, yeah, so no, I thought I'd come back and meet the new guys and, and, uh, keep Roger, uh, well, what, what do you call it? Keep track of how many lies he tells or what?
Well, it was nice of you to come for a visit.
So yep, I had nothing pressing, so, wait part, waiting for parts to put a tractor back together, so, and we just tore that part Friday, so we don't expect parts for a while.
Do you live north of Tyke or?
Yeah, I was born, um, and raised straight north of Wesley nine miles, like, which would be straight east of Tyke.
So how far are you from where Gene and Charles are?
I would be a mile and a half north and three quarter east.
So you're north of them?
Yep, yep, I'm a German one.
That's my aunt uncle.
That's your aunt uncle?
Was, yeah.
Oh, okay, uh, we learned.
Yep, yep, so...
I learned something, I learned something, yeah, I, I, uh, chuffed, uh, slightly just got.
Yeah, okay, yep, yep, so, Scott's actually, he'd be my dad's first cousin, maybe my great aunt uncle, but...
Right, right, yep, yep, yep.
So, yep.
Yep, doing well, S- Steve was my age, when I got killed.
Okay.
Yep, went to studies school with Steve, yep.
Gotcha.
Yep. Yeah, and like I said, I was born and raised down in the Tyke area and went to Emmanuel Lutheran and that's where they went.
Yeah, yeah.
My uncle had a farm up there and then when I got married, I went up to that farm, so, I've been there ever since, so, and... My family inherited that farm and then, uh, after my mother passed away, my brother and I have a farm down there, we have what we have up there.
Okay.
Yep, but I only, I can only farm a few acres of, of organic, otherwise I just custom do whatever I have. Help me, Benkin.
Oh, sure, sure, yep, yep. Brigade's talked about me a while ago.
Oh, shoot, we forgot. You wanna leave again?
Stop it later and I'll tell you, I really wanted to talk about it.
We, we were doing the family ties, think how close we had relation to where I live and, and trying to get a handle on it.
Yeah.
What, you got Tammy on vacation?
Yeah.
Is she gone next week too or just this week?
Just this week.
Yeah, she comes, she was, took seven days or something like that?
Yeah, they went to California.
She'll be gone, yeah, she'll...
She, I don't think she comes home until Saturday night late.
Okay.
And they left Saturday morning.
Is that, I was thinking that they took a few extra days or something, just to stay down there a little bit longer?
Yeah, because it's, the meetings were only Monday and Tuesday, so they have...
Oh, so they took a full...
Yeah.
Break it again?
Derek, what are you breaking now?
So, you weren't able to, you unchecked it?
I unchecked it myself, yeah.
Okay, so I don't have that one forced.
Okay.
Okay, alright, so...
Kaylee and I are going to California in February. So... But you were able to get on KCCH over there.
I told Tammy, hopefully it snows while you're there, she didn't like that.
Join and, and it stayed connected until, yeah, you rebooted my system.
Yeah.
She said there was some flooding, I think she said it was like sixty degrees out there.
I've got three so far that KCC.
Yeah, Sunday they went to the Ziegler too and it was sixty degrees, yeah.
Well, I, I literally would be like, double clicked on it and then, you're San Luis Obispo, like, two hours north of LA or something.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I forced the KCCH, but except for some doesn't.
We just pretty much had to set them out, budgeted for vacations and, so, where can we go to a beach, whether it was in California or Texas or Florida or somewhere for a week? Test that next time. And that, now that I've got it unchecked, so that's where we're all... Join automatically to KCCH when I...
I've never, that's one place I've never been.
Yeah, we, like I said, we usually push that, but you're not gonna push that for...
A year and a half ago, uh, to the mountains, because Kaylee used to live out there for a little while and worked at a camp and stuff, and so she wanted to show me around and, you know. No, that was, that was good. It's pretty out there, the scenery is nice, I wouldn't want to live there, but the scenery is nice.
Yeah, it was, it was a ravage, well, I had, I had an uncle, I had an uncle out there and so we went when we were young, I think I went sixty-four, would have been, as young as I'd have been out there, and then we were back in the late sixties, we were back out there, man, they drove like they were nuts then. It's only gotten worse since, you know.
I bet, yeah.
Yep, I had, I had an uncle that lived in Santa Ana, and, and just off the Santa Ana freeway, I mean, it probably wasn't from here to the middle of Main Street, you know what I mean, it, it, a long, you could just hear it, you know, even with the well insulated building, it was nuts. So then I had an aunt, uh, moved out there, they were up in the Napabala area, they actually moved up to Spokane now, and, uh, they got great, she has grandkids up there in Spokane.
That's a nice area though, too.
And so she went there, but I had a niece that was in LA, she's a, a, a fashion designer, and she'd been up until Washington State and went back down there, haven't talked to her lately to see, you know, what it's like, but, uh...
Never get out?
She kinda likes it there, so...
I've just been across the border in Oregon, but never done anything there. I've just been across the border and never done anything there. Rode the train to Spokane one year.
There you go.
Yeah, that would have been, yeah, just, just.
That would have been great.
Cause I, I had some friends in Idaho and I rode the train from, cause I wasn't old enough to drive yet and, uh, rode the train from St. Paul and my mom took me up there and rode it out to Spokane. I had a friend pick me up and spent a couple of weeks out there. I don't know, it was, it was fun.
We're supposed to go to Alaska, uh, in twenty-four, June of twenty-four, and my sister wants to take a train to Washington and then.
And then go further.
Fly, fly to Alaska.
We did, you know, the Amtrak stuff. I, I mean, I was fifteen, but I enjoyed it. I, I, I enjoyed going. It was a different experience, but. I don't know, thirty some hours on a train was a little long, but it was, uh, it was fine. It was, it was pretty though.
My wife took a train down to, uh, Texas and she said it was pretty fun. It took a little bit longer.
Well, it stops at every.
Well, and that and someone decided to take the easy way out by jumping in front of the train, so they got stuck somewhere for several hours waiting for all that to.
If we were in the middle of North Dakota, that didn't happen.
Yep, yep, so no, I've always done that. I, I enjoy model reverting, so I mean, I, I think that'd be great, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have never done that.
There's a train, like a scenery train, um, that you can ride. I can't remember what it's called, but it's like the, no, it's up in. I, I think it's up in Canada. It's like the northern something. I, I can't remember what it, but it.
We've done one of those, we've done the one up in St. Croix Falls, you know, and, and up, and up by the, the train up there, yep. Any of them are just hour excursions, you know, and.
Have you done the Boone one?
Uh, how long has that been going? Cause I remember.
Oh, yeah, a lot, yeah, a lot of years ago. I mean, I did it forty years ago, probably.
Okay, Kaylee and I did the dinner train last year. That was nice.
I would have done it when I was really little. I don't remember much of it.
Yeah.
Bec- yeah, it was the coal train.
I hadn't been there since I was a little kid either.
We did last year and it was funny.
I remember sticking my head out the window and getting some coal stuck in my eye, coal or ash or something from that. Yep, I had my head hanging out the window and the wind just shifted just right and.
Bad day.
So then my, yeah, so my mom had to pull my eyelid out and get in there with a Q-tip to try to get the chunk out.
What it takes for a person to remember, right?
Yeah, yeah, I don't remember the, like, I remember going through intersections and people waving and stuff. Don't remember the rest of the scenery, but that's the biggest thing that I remember is getting that chunk.
Charring out of your eyes.
Oh, he did, okay, okay. Yep.
You want me to start the recording again?
No.
No, not yet.
Not till.
Roger.
Roger, yeah, Roger will say we're back in session. You live up by Soy City once?
Um, yeah, in between Bancroft and, on the Seneca Black, a couple miles outside of Bancroft, yep.
Pretty close to Kyle.
Actually, he lives on the same gravel road as me, but north.
You're a mile east of that north-south gravel?
Yeah.
Okay.
So yeah, he does live north of me.
Okay.
Really close.
Kyle?
She'll fit, she'll fill in for him if you don't.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no.
I've never actually driven by there, but I just, you can see it from Blacktown.
Doug's done it.
Okay.
I saved the phone call.
He called him.
Good thought.
He's gonna think, he's gonna think we're all there.
Yeah.
His call will come to then Roger, it'll be two dogs. Calls are two dogs. I bet he wishes he could close himself in the end.
Well, you turned the cord, you know, you're getting way too efficient.
Morning.
Morning. We are up for construction in the road right away.
Okay, um, may I ask, is there people online or?
Yeah, I'm here, Doug.
Just one, very good, okay, very good, thank you. Uh, yeah, we have one request for construction of the road right away. Uh, quite a large installation of fiber optic cables up in Springfield, Grant, Harrison, Legyard Townships. Uh, by, the request is from Winnipeg Cooperative Telecom Association. Everything looks in order with them and I'd recommend that the board would go ahead and approve this, uh, permit.
And the permit number is oh, one, one, twenty, twenty-three. So the first one?
Yes.
I would move approval or permit. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Hey Roger, for that permit number, should it be ten instead of one for the tenth of January?
One, ten, twenty, twenty-three, but I think it's the month, the number.
That's our, that's our numbering situation.
It's the first permit of the year, uh, Kyle, so it'd be number, it's a road workers permit number. Is that, you're correct on the number, Doug?
Yes.
Okay. Yep.
So I have a motion and a second to approve the permit. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
All right. Put your signature there, please, Roger. And that is all the requests for work in the road right away.
We have anything with zoning, anything new besides the cancellation?
Uh, yeah, we had to postpone the January twenty-third meeting, public hearing. Um, we, that board, the zoning commission has three members, three out of five. Something that we need to get some new members appointed and one was unable to attend, so I postponed it. Um, I have been visiting with one person. He denied the request to become a planning zoning miss, uh, planning zoning commission member. So, once, the, the person's gonna be gone, once he gets back, I'm gonna reschedule. So.
And you're gonna have three members present?
And Tim, uh, did turn in as well, so. And then from the secondary road department, I do have, uh, Titanic positions filled. Tyler Heatlin is one of the operators and Corey Bartram is another operator that will be working out of the Titanic shops and.
Say that second name again.
Bartram.
Bartram.
We still have a mechanic's position open and I'm going to start advertising again. That's been, I think it's going on two years that we've been without a mechanic, uh, out there. It's a very difficult position to find right now. Uh, we have a pit farmland over at Cylinder, uh, sixteen and a half acres that I'm advertising for lease. The leaseholder, uh, is no longer, uh, is no longer engaged in farming, he's retired.
Is that on the east side of what?
It, it would be called what we call the cell, East Cylinder Pit. It's right on the east side of the, the, uh, it's where we're taking gravel right now.
It's where you're at right now, okay.
And then, uh, we're hoping that the bridge down in Irvington will be. Excuse me.
I see a question.
Thank you. Uh, the east side of that will be ready for us to get some fill in there the end of this week and the west side the beginning of next week, so we can get guardrail on that, get it opened up. So that's kind of, uh, what is going on with the loading pressure right now and the zone.
Anybody have anything for Doug? Thanks, Doug.
Very good, thank you, thank you.
Yep. We are up to time with our auditor.
Great, so possible on the agenda next week, we have, um, the, to approve the right to use lease for the policy, but Gatsby eighty-seven. The transfers that were made, there's a couple drainage items, D D one twenty-nine tile improvement could possibly be on there. And D D sixty subportal improvement. Those, that's all I have.
Okay, um.
And then I'm gonna put a note in here for the twenty-four.
Right, get on the agenda for Renee for, put it in candidly and. Yep, on both end dates so that we get them.
Okay.
Then, it'd probably be caught, uh, in caution to write both of the dates.
It's on there, just.
Yeah, so that we have that permit time on the bulletin board.
Oh, yes, okay. Yep, so they're both on there and you can cancel one, okay.
Yep, yep. To make sure that we get them posted. Can't think of anything else.
Hey Roger, for the agenda there, um, do we wanna have something on, and Tammy might already have a note on her own stuff, but during the, um, department head meeting, it was discussed about having it on the agenda for reviewing the policy and everything for the snow days. I don't know how it should be labeled that way, but do you know what I'm talking about?
John, but I'd rather go through Char and have, I'd talk to her first and have her put it on the agenda so that it goes through the right connections, cause I think she should really, she was at the meeting, right? No, she wasn't.
I don't think so.
I'm gonna go talk to her and see what's in the handbook now and then see if we have to clarify it.
Okay, yeah, cause there's quite a bit of discussion about that and it was discussed to bring it to the boardroom, so.
Yeah, I made some notes somewhere.
And I'll have to do payroll on the seventeenth, so I'll need to know that answer on Tuesday.
Oh.
Just, just put that out there.
Well, your, your answer is to do it however the department head.
Puts on the timesheet?
Right.
Yes.
As of right now, the department head made the decision.
Okay.
Said.
Okay, that's good with me?
Yep.
You talked about whether or not they, they get paid for a snow day and I think this.
Uh, no, some of them took comp time on top of the pay, but the department head said they could do it, so it's on the department head.
They got, they got paid double?
Yeah.
Can't do that.
Well, there is, there is a wide range of what actually happened there, so that's why it was discussed to bring it back to the board.
Hey, you can't dip on your time. That's like getting paid double time for, no, that's, it's, that's probably not even legal. I mean, comp time is to be, yeah, you can't get paid double.
I, I don't disagree with you, but right now we're gonna let, let's do whatever the department head said and then we'll come back to it.
I don't think we should. I think we should make, we should put, we should not allow it. When it comes to, when it comes to, uh, a lot, or approving that payroll, I'm gonna vote no on it because.
So when are you gonna do the payroll?
Then, um, I do Tuesday the seventeenth for us to get paid double.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna approve a double, double pay.
But I mean, I could wait to the afternoon if you want it on the agenda for next week or Donna wants to put it on the agenda.
Well, Jack, we don't, we don't actually vote on the payroll, but I think we probably should have it on the agenda for that morning so that Melissa knows what to do in the afternoon. If you can do that, Melissa, I think that'd be probably good.
Approve the payroll. Yeah, we approve the payroll, so.
Roger signs it and we approve it.
I stamp it and sign it, um.
Roger signs it, but it's not a whole board vote on that.
Talk to Donna and, and make it, make sure that we don't step on anybody's toes.
Okay.
But we'll put it on the agenda.
I mean, I guess, I, I guess I won't be here for it, but I'm just voicing my opinion. It's not, I don't know, it's not even, I don't know, it's even, it's even, well, I suppose you can do whatever you want, but there's no way in the world I would approve a double pay because of the snow day. I mean, that's ludicrous.
Well, definitely just hoping the new can work.
Well, you just can't pay, I mean, no, you can't do that. You can't pay somebody double for, for a day off. Either get, you're gonna pay them or give them comp time, one of the two, or take a day of vacation. Sure as heck ain't gonna pay them double time. Yeah, you just can't do that.
The other thing we talked about is TikTok on any of the county machines. It's not, that's gonna be deleted. So I don't think anybody's got TikTok on their county machines and I don't know.
Never added any machines.
Yeah, I'm not a fan.
Yeah. And actually, this is, you're going to have to, it should say Powsky on snow days. So that we get it on the agenda. That would be the correct, herby.
Okay, now let you talk to Donna and I can.
Yeah, on a snow day, you should either take comp time or you should take vacation time.
Of why you, you get, the, the issue is, is the ones that we closed, we left the courthouse open and said those could, could come in, should come in and work and those that couldn't come in.
Well, that's so different than somebody living on a gravel road saying, it's coming in every year and say, I want my gravel road paved. But we didn't, we didn't tell you to live on the gravel road. We didn't, we didn't tell you to live twenty miles from the courthouse. I mean, that's, I mean, that's, that's just, uh, I mean, you, I mean, you can't just say because I, because I live twenty miles away, I, you know, we're gonna pay you, we're, we're gonna pay you because you can't get in. I mean, that just ain't right.
Well, we haven't got that in our policy.
No, well, we need to address it.
It's not, it's not in the policy, so then we better do a little work on our handbook or.
I know, they've always been paid in pass for a snow day.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't have the language for the policy off the top of my head, but I know Doug was talking about what actually is in our policy on, at the department head meeting, so that's something we'll have to look at and confirm and all that.
And so they're on a snow day, if the courthouse is closed, you either take comp time or vacation time.
Well, if the courthouse is closed, they get paid. If we close the courthouse completely, they get paid. That's not the issue. The issue is, is when we close, when we have a event like, uh, whiteouts predicted and we say that they don't have to come in, but we're gonna open the courthouse, there are a couple departments that pay them comp time plus wages. And that's, that's the issue.
Can't do that. That's just an absolute no-no.
So, but we don't have anything.
Everybody will do it better.
Yeah, and then why doesn't everybody will stay home and say, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get paid. I want to, I think everybody will be doing that.
Everybody go for the double.
Paying everybody double time and stay home on a snow day.
No, they're getting paid double time if they came in.
If they came in.
Not to stay home, if they stayed home.
Those three hours, that eight to eleven.
It wasn't consistent because some departments did it, some didn't. So the, that's where we have to have consistency within the department, so evidently we have to put it in the handbook. That's where, whatever decision we make is gonna have to be in the handbook. Is that, am I making?
Yeah, makes sense.
Clear?
Yeah, we'll have to clear that up.
Yeah, cause I don't, then we take it out of the department head's hands.
We'll be the bad guys.
Yeah. And we are.
Flowing a big bucks.
Yeah. So, yeah, thank you, Kyle, but we'll, we'll address it then.
Thanks, Roger.
Jack, did you have anything?
Farm Bureau last Tuesday.
Yeah. Yeah.
Guess it was a good discussion. I guess ninety percent of it was sheriff's discussion, I guess. We got to meet the dog.
Pedro.
The Mexican dog.
Yeah.
I, I guess there was a question about Kyle's trip to Washington DC. Uh, whether that's beneficial to the county and they want, they'd like to have an answer what benefit there is to the county for someone, you know, going to Washington DC. And it was, well, you'll have to, that's, yeah, something Kyle has to answer.
Yeah.
Who, who was asking that and what trip?
Well, the trip you're doing in January or February, Washington DC.
And that was asked at Farm Bureau or one of you guys?
Farm Bureau.
They were hoping you were gonna be there because they wanted to ask you about it, but it was, um, Rich Rosenmeyer, um, asked about it, I think, uh, I think, um, Jim Miller.
The guy that sells trailers was mentioned.
Tom Ichen.
Yeah, they had questions on the validity of it, what, what benefit there is to the county.
Well, they could sure all ask me at any point in time.
So that's why I, that was it.
Matt, you have anything?
No, I, I'm not, I just, there's a meeting on the twenty-fifth. I wanted to clarify that. As far as that a meeting that I need to be at for a drainage?
Yeah, that's just delegates to, to the meeting. It's not all, it's a public meeting, but nobody attends but to delegates.
Am I a delegate?
No.
I'm not, okay, I just wanna make sure that was the meeting. And where, where would I find committee meeting info for the committees that we are on, the boards we're on?
You should have an email.
Okay.
She sent.
You'll get an email.
Yeah, we got the email showing which ones were on.
You'll get an email.
Okay. From those groups stating when the meetings and stuff are.
Right, that's, that's up to that group to let you know.
Sure.
Like tomorrow I got a meeting in Mason City on roads.
Sure.
Okay. They, they emailed me already.
Um, and I guess I got a Zoom meeting tomorrow morning at ten, uh, early channel.
Um, I did get a call yesterday from a gentleman down in the West Bend area. Um, just put an addition on his house or is in the process of putting an addition on his house and the assessor's field guy, uh, Brandon Oswald came by and, you know, knocked on the door and said, hey, I see you're putting on addition to your house. Um, and asked him a bunch of questions and wanted to come in and whatnot, but, you know, of course didn't, but, but, uh, he came in the assessor's car, but he had a Schumacher well drilling hat, a Schumacher well drilling coat and a Schumacher well drilling sweatshirt. And did not say he was with the assessor's office or state his name. So just a, just a matter of professionalism, I guess. I had a call on that. And, you know, he had, the gentleman's opinion was if you're going around asking for money from the county, maybe not to advertise another business and I don't know if we have county shirts, uh, you know, for those departments or, or just some generic where when you're going around and doing that. It would be good, even in.
We have, we have, we have badges.
So it, it would be good to.
There are county badges you can wear.
I, yeah, so I, that was just a concern of his that he brought up and not that he was mad or anything, it's just, um.
Well, I guess, I guess, think about him, you should ask him, did you have, did you apply, do you have building permit? legally, you're supposed to have building permit.
Uh, does that, even if you're adding onto a house?
Yes.
In the country?
Yeah, anybody, anybody, that's, that's a, that's a, you're, by law, you're supposed to have, get a building permit. I guess I would ask him, what did you have the building permit?
Okay.
If he doesn't, well then, why is he, why is he chewing out the, you know, the assessor's office? He's not, he's not doing his due diligence either.
I think he's just more talking about the guy, how he presented himself.
Well, I understand that, but the thing is, like, does he, does he have, you know, turned around and see he has a building permit?
That I don't know, but I think the issue with, yeah, like, you know, the issue with that.
I understand that, but on the other hand, you know, most of these people, nobody, most of these people never get a building permit either.
I, I don't know if that's the best way to go about it, just making it into an attacking type situation. I think it's good information to be aware of and just.
No, I'm not arguing. I mean, he, the assessor's, yeah, the assessor should be presenting himself in, in a professional way. And probably should have his, uh, name badge on, uh, hanging on the front of his, you know, in front of his coat that he's with the county.
Right.
Well, I think there's lettering on the car.
There is lettering on the car, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that part, that's part of what he.
But he did not state who he was. Uh, or, and was not wearing any attire describing, did not look like he was a county worker, you know?
We, we have no dress code for.
Yeah, and I did not know, so that's, I just said I'd bring it up.
So I, I'm going to be a little bit reluctant to say that anybody has to wear this or.
Right, right.
But he should, he should have had his badge hanging on front of.
But I, I agree with you that maybe having three identifications of somebody else is a little bit too much.
And maybe that somebody else isn't why, there, I, I identified with going around.
But we have no teeth.
So, anyway, I'm, that's all I had.
We'll mention it.
Okay.
Mr. Wagner.
I did not have.
Tur in there yet.
Did not have anything, nothing yet, so.
Okay. Uh, I got a NACO meeting tomorrow. Never been to one, so I'll figure out what it is. And Melissa, you have nothing else? Marge didn't have anything?
I don't think so. You want me to check with her?
Did you skip over Kyle?
Yeah, Roger, I did, I did have, um, NACO meeting yesterday afternoon. They, probably the thing that applied the most was discussion about WOTUS or Waters of the US. And what, it was similar to what John had said this morning, but the process on WOTUS is they're doing a two-part, um, rulemaking process. The first part, which got finished, the final rule got released at the end of December was for bringing the rules back to pre-Trump and pre-Obama rules, the stuff that was not contested, so that the, one of the concerns there is there was not an exemption for like public stormwater drains and municipalities in that regard, so NACO's pretty concerned about that because, which for us would potentially impact all of our drainage facilities. So I'm sure John had similar thoughts and concerns on it that way, but the second part of the rule is Biden's administration plan for WOTUS requirements, so it's complicated, but the first phase is kind of done now.
But it didn't really give clarity to anything from what I've read. It didn't really say that waters hooked to a river or anything else were part of the river. It, it had no clarity on whether green districts were applied to it or nothing, so.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of gray area there, so I guess we'll have to wait for some more guidance and implementation because they still don't have solid answers on any of that yet. They don't know when it'll be implemented or anything, so still kinda early stages that way.
Everybody's filed objections to it, so it'll be interesting to see what it turns out to be. Sorry about that, I didn't see you.
No problem.
Anybody have anything else? Marge?
Did not.
Did not have anything?
No.
Okay. If nobody has anything else to come before the good of Cassuth County, we will call the meeting adjourned. By unanimous consent.
Okay.